I want to call the Hopkinton Town Council meeting of October 6th, 2014, to order with a moment of silent meditation and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda is the consent agenda. Approve the town council meeting minutes of September 15th, 2014. Set November 3rd, 2014 as a hearing date for renewals of liquor licenses and ficturing licenses. Set October 2nd, 2014 as a hearing date for the special event permit filed by the Friends of the Land Trust. Approve refunds submitted by the tax collector.
Motion to approve the town council meeting minutes of September 15th. Set November 3rd, 2014 as a hearing date for the renewals of liquor licenses. And approve refunds submitted by the tax collector.
Yeah, second please.
I'm going to abstain because I wasn't at that meeting.
I'll second it. Okay. Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At least I'm not abstaining because I was at the meeting on September 15th.
We thank you for not approving the last two.
Oh yeah.
I wanted to correct it because it needs to be done.
Oh, do we still need to correct it?
Yeah.
Alright, so then I make a motion to correct the special that we are going to be setting October 20th, 2014 as a hearing date for a special event permit filed by the Friends of the Land Trust.
For a class F licorice.
For a class...
F.
F licorices.
Thank you.
Okay.
Now we need a second. That's you.
Can I do that?
Yes.
Okay, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I abstain on that one also?
No, you get to vote on that one.
Okay, aye, aye, aye.
Okay, first public forum. Anyone out there wishing to be heard? Mr. Thompson.
Thank you very much. My name's Tom Thompson. Live in Ho Valley. And my son is the owner of one of the new businesses that started up in town. Thompson's Flowers and Antiques. This has been a dream of his for a long time. And he's worked hard at it. He couldn't be here tonight, his apologies. He asked his helper to come along and give his thanks for the support the town has had in the process of him getting all of his permits together and that sort of thing. He had a soft opening this last week, so he's been open for a week. He's very optimistic. Tremendous number of people stopped by and good comments. People are buying stuff, so that's always good. So we're looking at a couple of weeks of this kind of soft opening. And then he is a supporter of the Hopkington Pop Art. And so we expect to have a pretty big weekend that weekend. And the following weekend will be a grand opening. And we expect big things from then on out, so. Some of you folks have stopped by the shop. And we obviously encourage anybody that wants to. It's all the way over to Ho Valley for you folks that live in Ashway. You can get down that way. It's at the top of the, it used to be the Top of the Hill Restaurant. A lot of us know where that was. We actually, Wendy, the owner of the building, actually had the original sign from the Top of the Hill Restaurant. So we actually have that inside the room up on one end. So that's the old timers that come in that gets them talking about what used to be there. So again, I appreciate the support of the town council and zoning to get, to help Jed through the process of getting everything, all of his ducks in a row so we could open this up, so. He's working hard at it. He's working seven days a week right now. Delivering flowers in the morning, opening up typically at 11 or 12 o'clock and then staying there until 6:00.
I didn't see any flowers in there. I guess I went in there Sunday, but yesterday...
Yeah, they are in there.
I guess I didn't look around.
Yeah, we've got a cool, it's full of flowers. And he's been selling roses and all kinds of stuff, so.
I bought some of Von Starks. But it's nice, he has that pay system where you just slide.
Yeah, that little square.
So that's efficient.
That's technology.
Paperless.
Way beyond my pay scale, but he uses that so that allows him to accept credit cards.
And he's also been, I just ordered a wreath from him because it's so nice to have someone who's building the wreaths. So you can have wreaths for the door that you can, you know, I don't have to go into Westerly. I don't have to go other places. I don't have to go online or in some catalog. I can actually have somebody make one. It's lovely, so very excited about that.
That's great.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. That's what I wanted to do. Just mention that.
I hope he does very well.
Okay, next on our agenda folks, Town Council present report. YMCA joint meeting and the Hopkinton residents' new business ventures. The joint meeting was held at the Richmond Y in Richmond. And it was an early morning breakfast meeting. I, myself, Chief Palmer was at another table, but area council folks, chiefs of police, YMCA folks, folks from Charahoe. I was sitting with Lori Weber, the principal of the high school, Chief Allen from Charleston, and a few other folks from YMCA. But it was a good joint meeting. We talked about a lot of things. One thing I walked away from was, it seemed to be, was the transportation issue. Trying to get folks, at least from our town, to utilize some of their services in Richmond or Westerly for that matter. But we walked away with maybe kind of combining forces to talk about at a future date some transportation issues that might allow our folks to utilize some of those services, so. It was a good meeting and, I don't know, our table was lively and I'm sure Chief Palmer's was too. But it was great. It was very good and I enjoyed it. Next up on my report is the, a couple of new businesses opened up in town. One, Mr. Thompson's son, Jebediah, opened up the antique and florist shop. And also too, there was a resident by the name of Carrie Anne Bernard. She opened up a pet store. And the reason I want to mention this is that I have a dog and he has a very special diet. And she carries a lot of different food that actually you wouldn't think that she would. And it's across the street from the Richmond Police Station. It's behind, near Napa. So please try and solicit that business for pet food. I know most of us have dogs or cats or whatever, so. She's a great lady and I told her I'd mention her shop. And lastly, isn't actually here, but Kids Co. opened up their daycare center. It's been open about a month now. So they finally got up and running and that's on...
Seven Mechanic.
Yeah, Mechanic Street, right.
Seven Mechanic Street. So we finally have a childcare facility in town. My goodness.
Daycare, yeah. Yeah, so that's it. Next on our agenda, Town Manager report, Bill McGary.
Thank you. On August 27th, the meeting was held at the Crandall House to wrap up the South Drive Drainage Improvement Project. And all the principals were in attendance to resolve the few remaining issues related to the project. And Brian Rosso and Tim Tapp worked together and we've already submitted the required FEMA reimbursement paperwork to REMA. And it goes up to FEMA from there. So we don't anticipate any problems on the reimbursement. And hopefully the check will be in the mail soon. Secondly, during the month of September, I drafted an internal posting notice and public advertisement to announce the soon-to-be vacant Deputy Finance Clerk position. Agnes Hall has submitted her retirement papers, but she's agreed to she's agreed to stay on until we can get somebody in place, which is very important and really, really helps out the town. She's also agreed to stay for a brief orientation session for that new employee, so. Ads were placed in the Westerly Sun, also on the town's website along with a civilian job application and a job description for the position. And that was on Sunday, September 28th. Deadline date for the receipt of applications is October 17th. And after a review of the applications, Finance Director Brian Rosso and I will interview candidates in an attempt to fill the position. And lastly, on September 15th, Christine Broshue, the tax assessor, and I met with Russ Crossman from Crossman Engineering at the Sogatucket Springs Apartments to discuss a proposed easement on town property which would allow Women's Development Corporation the ability to drop a second well to serve their future needs. Because of the complexity of the issue, we spoke with representatives from Crossman Engineering. They came down. They reviewed the documents that were applicable to it. They also made a site inspection. And it was mutually agreed upon that they are going to be referred to the Rhode Island Department of Health to obtain a variance rather than an easement from a town at this time, so. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Any questions for Bill, folks? Sure, Phil. Thanks, Phil. Next on our agenda, under Old Business. Discuss and vote to authorize borrowing an amount not to exceed $2 million to finance the reconstruction of town roads prioritized by the town council at its July 21st, 2014 meeting.
Can I make the motion and then we can discuss it?
Sure.
I'd like to make the motion that Hopkinton Town Council authorize borrowing an amount not to exceed $2 million to finance the reconstruction of town roads prioritized by the town council at its July 21st, 2014 meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second. Discussion? Scott?
God bless you.
Go where you are. Okay. David?
Um, no, I'm fine. I'll go along with the highway department as far as which road should be done first. And I think it's something that has to be done. And I think let's get to it.
Okay. Blaber?
I'm hoping that there's some flexibility so that between the Town Manager and the Public Works Department, they can choose if another road suddenly comes up and it's more important than the first one's schedule. But I think it's an excellent bond. I'm glad we have it and to more power to you. Sooner you can start, the happier we all are.
And this was also approved by the voters, the residents, so that's what prompted this, precipitated this. Chip?
Yeah?
Got a question?
When was this approved by the voters? Was it on the last...
The referendum in June?
Was it? It was on there?
Yeah.
I just flipped my mind.
Yeah, that's why I figured that's probably why you probably wanted to mention it, so. Thanks, Tom. Okay, motion made in second. Any further discussion? Scott, nothing, huh?
No.
Okay. Any further discussion, folks? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain? No?
Should I?
Oh, you said aye, okay. All right.
Good.
Thank you. Next on to New Business. Update on healthcare services provided by the Wood River Health Services. Director Michael Lichtenstein. Michael.
Thank you. I appreciate being able to come here. I usually come here when we're asking for money. That's not the case today, so. Frank was able to attend a session we had earlier this year when we, as part of National Community Health Center Week, which is the first week or second week in August. There was a national award presented to our congressional delegation. And Representative Landvin wasn't able to attend that in Providence. So we got to schedule him to come down and actually gave him that award as a champion for healthcare and supporting our work at the health center. And Frank was gracious and able to attend that. There were some comments I offered at that time. I'd like to share some of what we did then and some of the things that we're working on now and then open up to any questions that you might have. As many of you know, we're part of a national movement. And in Rhode Island, there are eight health center organizations. In fact, today we had, for the Rhode Island Health Center Association, we're in our 40th year of celebrating health centers in the state. So we had a great event this morning. But we all offer a wide range of services. And at the health center, we offer primary care, medical services for newborns to the opposite end of the age spectrum. And we offer dental care, WIC, which is a program which supports young families who have economic challenges and they have children under the age of five or they may be pregnant and expecting their first child. And for many, I remember when I came home first with my wife with our newborn and we had these days in the hospital with nursing staff and medical assistants. We got home and it was, uh-oh, now what do we do? So our staff offers special support and nutrition counseling and to help the moms and dads to kind of get over that hurdle and that fear and to get on the path around healthy nutrition. And that's really a cornerstone of what we're trying to do at the health center is try to get ahead of the healthcare challenges, more preventive if we can, to get folks in on a routine basis who have chronic diseases and not wait for it to become a crisis, so. That's one area. We do a lot around disease management. People with diabetes and hypertension, cardiovascular disease. And we try to start with the little ones about getting in to see the dentist. I won't ask how many of you have been to the dentist in the last six months or a year. And I'm one of those that at age four was carried by my dad into the dentist office kicking and screaming. But I'm past that now. I can walk through our dental offices without panic. And social services that we offer. And I know Frank was particularly interested in a couple of themes over the last several months. One mentioned that we hired our first behavioral health manager. So this month, her name is Megan Burnt. She's a licensed independent clinical social worker. And instead of only having services we refer out, Megan will be developing integrated behavioral health services within the health center. So patients who come in and they may be seeing Dr. Campaneri and raising a concern not eating, appetites off, feeling depressed, hopeless, you know, life is a challenge, to be able to say, I have a colleague that I'd like you to meet. Would you be willing to meet Megan? She's really good at helping people get past some of these challenges. Instead of just saying, I'd like to refer you to someone and give a card or have someone make a referral to Dr. so-and-so or Mary Smith down the street, Megan can come in, meet this person, or follow up with a phone call and really create what we call a warm handoff. And we're hoping that that will help cement some of the referral challenges that people with mental health and substance abuse challenges face with unknown, what does it mean to go get counseling somewhere to get services? There are some horror stories out there. And there are some success stories. And sometimes people who don't want help can choose the one that suits their purposes best. So that's new for us and that's something that we'll be expanding. Last year, we saw about 7,000 patients at the health center. About over 23,000 patient visits. And that's not counting the behavioral health piece. That's going to be growing and we expect to see that number increasing as well. And in the last three years, we've counted, we've served over 11,000 patients as a whole. So people have come and gone, obviously, and some people don't come every year. But the federal government requires us to count visits and patients every year. The Rhode Island Health Center Association did something new this year. They contracted with an entity called Capital Link. Somebody you can check out online. They're a well-established reputable organization that helps with financing and economic impact of health centers across the country and other healthcare delivery. And they did analysis, looking at all the health centers and all of our economic impact. And looking at the jobs we create, the number of employees, the services we provide. There's some, you know, staggering numbers. They figured we saved the system about $9 million that would have been spent elsewhere. Service we provided totaled $8.4 million and they looked at our tax impact of $1.1 million. Now, employing 65 people as we do now. We're a pretty large employer in Hopkinton. I don't know who's larger. There's probably someone out there, but...
Yeah, Mr. Quinlan, maybe.
Maybe Mr. Quinlan. But I think sometimes people look at, though we come to the council and we go to foundations and go to others looking for financial support, that we're a fairly significant economic driver and we do great jobs and provide a valuable service. You know, our goal is to provide integrated and coordinated care for our patients. And the mission of the health center is to improve the health and well-being of our community by sharing access to affordable, high-quality healthcare, coordinated services, and health-related information. And our board, it's a group of volunteers. They're, at least 51% by our federal regulations, have to be active patients of the health center. So the people that are on our board are directors. And we're about 70-some percent now of our board. They're there as patients as well as community members, representing the community and making sure that Wood River is serving the community as well as helping to protect the organization. And I'd be remiss without injecting another thank you to the council. You guys have been fabulous and wonderful supporters of ours. And not just when it comes to budget time, but, you know, people making comments about Wood River Health Services in a positive light, recognizing the high-quality professionalism of what we do. But some recent highlights, I know you were asking, I think a couple of visits ago, about the Affordable Care Act and what role might we play in helping to educate the community about the Affordable Care options. So we've hired and trained staff. There are about eight staff at the health center that have been trained. But we really have two people who, that are stars. And they're very actively involved in not only work at the health center, but going out to community locations to educate people about their options for health insurance. And from the beginning of the initiative through today, so these are very current numbers, we have assisted in one or two, three or four or five visits depending on some of the challenges. But the total was 3,898 assists. So 3,898 assists.
That's great.
There were 1,510 applications submitted. And about 1,044, we estimate, number of folks that were enrolled. Now, we can't get that specifically because, you know, Frank might go and sign up on his own after coming to get some help from us. There's no way of that coming back, you know, to be credited to Wood River. And we're gearing up for open enrollment, which starts November 15th and goes through February 15th. So folks who have not signed up and are looking for an opportunity, this is the season to begin.
And it begins November?
November 15th. Though people can call the health center anytime and ask, you know, I'm asking for questions about open enrollment or access to healthcare. We're happy to do that. We've also had good success with helping patients move towards a budget plan. A couple of years ago, we started and people were having some financial challenges. And as you may recall, there's a sliding fee scale for people up to a certain income level. And so their fees are reduced. But even at that, some people have difficulty making payments. We have a woman whose sole job is to work with that end of our business and will help people develop budget plans. So if you end up with $200, many of us could put that on a credit card or write a check or cash, but not all of our patients can do that. And so sometimes they would neglect coming in for care because they felt like, oh, I know they're going to ask me for money and I don't have it, and what do I do? And they could be steered to LeAnn to set up a budget plan and do $5 a month, $10 a month. We've had people walking out of our office with tears of joy because now they can carry their heads high knowing they're being responsible for what they owe and not having to worry about making an appointment. We are, we've received funding from the federal government to expand our capacity. So we'll be hiring an additional doctor and nurse practitioner and the medical assistant and nurse supports as well as administrative supports to help support their work. We'll be participating in a program the Department of Health has rolled out in the last year. It's called Wise Woman. It's for uninsured women who are involved with cancer. And it's a cancer screening and resource support program. So we'll be beginning to engage with that. We're in plans with Westerly Hospital to help assist moving people away from using the emergency department and using primary care practice instead. And what we're looking at is opening up a four-exam room practice site right at the hospital. So that people who, and the data's about, in Rhode Island, about 44, 42 to 44% of folks who go to the emergency department, those visits could have been handled in their primary care practice. And you know how expensive it is to go to the emergency department? So by opening up a practice down the hall from the emergency department, we hope we'll be able to steer people to use our practice instead of the emergency department. And for many of our patients who live in that area, who have transportation barriers, and I know you were referencing transportation. You know the challenge of folks getting around this area. We're hoping that they'll be able to access care where otherwise they've had some difficulties. We also have plans to make improvements to our current facility. We'll be modifying our waiting area to make it more comfortable for our patients to ensure a little more privacy and to help support some team practice area. And we've acquired an additional board member, John Ure, who some, many of you know from Yoree and Outfitters, has joined our board this year. And we've been able to secure grants for approving data management, workforce training, facilities and equipment improvement, patient service coordination. And examples are Kimball Foundation, Workforce Training Board, the Health Resource and Service Administration, Department of Health, David Health Plans, the General Assembly. So our staff work hard at trying to get money outside of relying on our patients or the local towns for doing that. We have a new website, so visit us on our new website. It's, you can Google Wood River Health Services and you'll find us. And we also encourage you to like us on Facebook. We usually post some helpful, useful information about what might be happening. And I'm happy to entertain any questions. But before I close, I wish you the best of luck in your upcoming election.
Dave, any questions for Michael?
I just, I think I can sum it up by just simply saying that I'm very proud to have you in this community. Actually, it's a real, it's a real plus for us. We're in Hopkinton and I hope it's a plus for you too.
It is, absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I would certainly agree with Dave. But I have two. You said you had 7,000 people last year. What's the percentage of Hopkinton citizens out of the 7,000?
Oh, I don't have that. It's, the largest percentage of people come from Hopkinton.
I would assume so.
Yes, it is the largest. And that may be 18 or 20%, but I can get back and forward that information to you.
Oh, okay, so 18 to 20%. I think it's excellent. I'm really glad you are supporting. We have 8,188 citizens. So I certainly hope you're supporting quite a number of them. I think it's great.
There is something, if you're curious, and you don't have to be a health center person to do this, there's actually a, the federal government has set up a website or a, it's a fabulous tool. It's called udsmapper.org where you can go in and you can find where patients are, not by who personally, but what percentage of patients are involved at what health center and what part of the nation.
Great.
And we have pretty high penetration of patients in the Hopkinton area.
But I do hope, I do hope there are more health centers. I think that's really one of the best ways for the healthcare megalith to go. I had a question then too. On the Westerly L&amp;M relationship, now that it's L&amp;M, how has that relationship affected you or not at all? Or it's a benefit? How is that called?
That's a broad question. I would say very simply, it's benefited us. You know, there have been some difficulties and some realities that they've had to face such as closing, you know, the maternity...
Like the OB?
The OB practice. But it's through our relationship with them and their commitment to providing the right care for the right person in the right place that they're willing to invite us, well, sort of a mutual conversation, but to allow us to open up a practice at the hospital.
Sure, great.
And within a union shop, we're a non-union entity, to say, from a leadership point of view, Bruce Cummings saying, this is the right thing to do. In the short run, it may actually hurt them financially in one regard because if we're taking visits out of the emergency room, right now they get paid per visit. Healthcare is changing in such a way that there's something called pay for value, not just pay for visit or pay for service. So that the health outcomes in a variety of ways are being used to evaluate the finances and what people get or don't get. So if they can help the state system and the national economy by moving healthcare to more appropriate setting, there'll be more incentives for them down the road as opposed to just, you know, pay for the visit, pay for the visit. But they've been very, very supportive of us in what we're trying to do.
Yeah, it would be very nice to keep that as, you know, people do like their doctors to be as local as possible.
Absolutely.
So I think that's excellent. But I think the work you're doing is wonderful and I'm glad you did.
Thank you very much.
Scott, anything for Michael?
I'm glad that Wood River Health Services is in town and I'm also a patient, so thank you.
Appreciate that. Our best feedback is when our patients say, "Thank you." They know directly the benefit of what it's...
Yeah, I just had one quick question, Mike. On that behavioral health person, Megan, is that, is her position based on a grant or is that she on the staff now?
Well...
Is that, like, is she going to, in six months, all the money dried up and she's going to...
No, our board has a very firm commitment to behavioral health as part of our organization. And Neighborhood Health Plan of Rhode Island has advanced us a grant to help bring her to our organization, recognizing that day one, she's not seeing patients. There's an elaborate credentialing process that we have to go through. So she's been with us for a few weeks. She hasn't seen a patient yet, which means she hasn't created any billing yet. But our goal is to build that product, that model, that service for our patients and insurance and payers will come. And again, part of the incentive pieces, there are expectations that health centers like ours and primary care practices will have more than just the doctor and nurse as an option. And the federal government is looking at putting more money to support. They're calling it integrating or the integration of behavioral health and primary care practices. I use the term integration and coordination because not everyone wants to be integrated at Wood River. They could see their doctor at Wood River. They may have a therapist in the community. We want to coordinate information as appropriate and not say, oh, give up that person, come and see us. I mean, we can't serve 11,000 people. The data's probably one out of four, one out of five people have challenges with mental health. And if you add in substance abuse, the numbers go up. So it's a lot of people that we know are having challenges, so. Our commitment is long-term to our patients to make sure we help them get the right service for what they or their family need, so.
Okay, great, thanks Megan. Thanks for all you do, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Thanks. Okay, thank you. I'll be back, thank you. Next, under New Businesses, to discuss, consider and authorize the town manager to enter into a three-year agreement between Direct Energy and the Town of Hopkinton for power supply, coordination services and electricity from December 14, 2014, through December 2017. Bill McGary. Thank you. Oh, okay, Brian.
Good evening, council.
Hello, Brian.
How we doing?
Good.
So as you may know, the town's current electrical contract expires in December, so the finance department has been out negotiating with other local suppliers and national suppliers to try to find us the next best option for our next fixed contract. I believe that Direct Energy has offered us the best contract available. They currently participate in a program called the REPP Program, which is the Rhode Island Energy Aggregation Program. It's through the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns, which basically allows us to consolidate all the small municipalities and get like essentially a group rate as opposed to going as individual as we would have to do with like, say, National Grid, their number one competitor. So when I look back on our last contract, we just previously are coming to close of our three-year fixed contract with Direct Energy, and we saved around $5,000 over that three years by going with them rather than National Grid. And I think this same cost benefit's gonna replicate with this contract. And the other issue with National Grid is they don't offer three-year contracts. Generally, they'll do six-month, three-month, rarely longer than that. So we'd go through this every six months and, you know, the energy market being as volatile it is, you don't know what you're gonna get six months from now or six months after that. So I think the three-year contract that Direct Energy's offering us probably gives us the safest alternative to supplying the town with electricity over that timeframe. Any questions? There was another thing I actually mentioned earlier. I, there was an article in the Providence Journal, because one of the issues I had when I was analyzing this is that National Grid isn't gonna offer up their rates for 2015 until December. So it was kind of hard for me to compare and contrast the, you know, the costs of the two companies. However, there was recently an article in the Providence Journal that stated they're anticipating a 3.5% increase. With that being said, that would bring them up to about 11 cents per kilowatt, and Direct Energy's offering us 9.9 over the three years. And like I said, even at the 11 cents, you know, that's gonna be a short-term window of, you know, three to six months, and then we'll have to, depending on market rates, you know, try to find another contract.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Brian?
I think it's a no-brainer, just as easy as that.
I think we've done it before, too. I think it makes very good sense. I have no problems.
Yeah, the only question I have, which I already chatted with Brian about, was the, how do you know what to compare it against if grid's schedule isn't out yet, but I guess you've already kind of got an indication.
Yeah, and looking, again, looking back on the history, you know, over the three years, I researched National Grid's rates and they were consistently higher. So there's nothing that would indicate that that would change, so.
Right, Scott, do you have anything for Brian?
No, no comments, no questions.
Okay, I would move that the Hopkinton Town Council authorize the town manager to enter into a three-year agreement between Direct Energy and the Town for Power Supply Coordination Services and Electricity from December 2014 through December 2017.
I would second that.
Okay, motion made a second. Any other comments, folks? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian. Okay. Next, under New Businesses, discuss the repair of the currently inoperable water line meter located at the Richmond-Hopkinton Town Line. Bill?
Thank you. This was placed on the agenda for informational purposes for the Hopkinton Town Council and the people of Hopkinton. On Thursday, September 18th, there was a meeting held at the Hope Valley Fire Department. President was Chief Stanley and Richmond Water Department Director Leon Millis, Richmond Town Administrator Rob Rock and myself, to discuss the repair of the water line meter at the Town Line. As you are probably aware, that the meter at the line has been inoperative for some time. And this meter measures the total amount of water passing from Richmond into Hopkinton. And currently is the individual water meters at the 48 user locations that determine the actual amount of water used by Hopkinton residents and businesses. Any other water that flows into the town from Richmond is unmeasured at this time. And it's the Town of Richmond's intention to repair the water line meter on Friday, October 17th, at 9:00 PM. They originally wanted to do it earlier, but I spoke with Rob Rock and Town Council President Frank Lindolfi, and we convinced them to scale that back for a couple of hours until 9:00 PM. It is anticipated that the meter will be shut off for no longer than two hours and probably a lot less. Once the meter's repaired, we're gonna be required by agreement to pay for the water through the meter, which that was not used by the 48 users. And the vast majority of that amount of water is to flush the hydrants twice a year in Hopkinton. According to Fire Chief Fred Stanley, there are 60 hydrants in the entire system, 50 in Richmond and 10 fire hydrants in Hopkinton. We estimate that the, in order to flush the Hopkinton hydrants, it'll take approximately 150,000 gallons of water at 3 cents a gallon, approximately $450. Now, once the Hopkinton Town Council has reviewed this matter, tomorrow morning, we are prepared to send out individual letters to each of the 48 users on the water line. I've already drafted the letter and everything's all set to go, to advise them exactly the day, the date, the time and the length of the anticipated shut-off. We also intend to put it on our website on Wednesday morning, so they'll have at least a week's notice. And I've been in conversation with Ron McDonald as far as using the code red system to notify the people via phone, but we just have to determine whether or not we can focus it or limit that focus to, you know, the people on Main Street in the area. We're unable at this time to make a determination, but we're checking into that now. But certainly, they're all gonna get individual letters to let them know that the water's gonna be shut off. And finally, it was just mutually agreed upon between the parties that we're gonna meet one more time just before the shut-off on October 17th, to make sure everything's in line with respect to the lighting, possible inclement weather conditions, you know, who's gonna be there and those kind of things, the details related to the incident. We don't anticipate any logistical problems. We've been told that once the water is shut off, that if there's a problem with the pump not working, they can just put it right back in and the water will continue on. So it doesn't appear that the water is gonna be interrupted for a considerable amount of time. We're hoping that the meter itself can be repaired just by some, just cleaning it out and, they think there's rocks stuck in the gears, so they, hopefully they can square it away that way. We won't know, they won't know until they get in there, so.
No, quick question. It's unmeasured, why would we want to fix it? Just kidding, just kidding.
It's a joke, it's a joke.
Just kidding. Sorry, Richmond. Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, what is the cost of the meter? Do we have to pay for that?
We have to pay for the meter tester, which is $750.
Okay. And we pay that through the town or through the water users?
Oh, no, we pay that to the meter tester.
Okay, but I mean, but we, as the municipality, pay it, the 48 users do not pay it?
No, we would pay that, yes.
We would pay it, so it's municipal. And then, once they fix this, and we're assuming we're gonna have 150,000 gallons for the hydrants, if there's anything beyond that 450, how do you test where the water goes or where it may leak or, you know, now, we don't really know how much water goes in except for the meters that we've had, the meters that are working.
According to the contract between the Town of Hopkinton and the Hope Valley Fire District, we cannot charge them for any of the water that they use for flushing the hydrants.
Right, I don't have a problem with that. It's called, if, I mean, we're assuming that's about $450, because you're assuming it's about 150,000 gallons, which is, which is fine, but if we find that once this meter is freed up and the 48 houses are accounted for and the 150,000 gallons is accounted for, and then there is more than that, how do we find out where we may have a problem? Since we haven't had this for a while, I don't know how much water is actually not being registered, because we don't know it's a 150,000.
It's like a double negative. I mean, you don't, you can't know.
Right.
If you're not metering it, you can't know, you know.
Right.
How much it's gonna cost and how many gallons are going through and who's getting it.
So then do we go back to Richmond and they have to retest?
I think you're confusing the two parts, like, the two hydrants, the 10 hydrants, they're just flushing annually.
10 hydrants, no, it's fine. I don't have a problem with the hydrants. I don't have a problem with the 48 people. It's because we haven't measured anything, we really don't know how much water's going through. We're assuming it's at least another 150,000, which is perfectly valid, but we don't know if there's any other loss that we're not aware of, nor is Richmond. So once we have a meter that says, well, this is how much water's going into your town, and this is how much we can account for, but here's how much is left over, how do we determine that, or is that something Richmond has to do?
There are two separate water lines. One is for the 48 households and the other one is for fire flow.
Uh-huh.
It's, I think, a two-inch line for the, for the 48 users and a 12-inch line for the fire flow. So they measure through a separate line exactly how much water will go through that line.
Okay, so we'll be able to at least know which line may be causing the problem, too, if there's a problem after they've opened up the main meter. The main meter opens up and suddenly we're metering more water than we anticipated.
The meter monitors both lines.
Okay, so, so the smaller line that goes to the 48 houses, we have their meters that all work.
Right.
And we can, we can tell where that is. It's the fire department line that could end up being the problem line. If there's more water than an extra 150,000 gallons, if it's 500,000 gallons, there's obviously a problem somewhere.
Well, we would have to determine exactly where that other water went, but.
Exactly. What I just meant is who does that? Does Richmond do that? Do we do that in conjunction with Richmond?
I mean, I'd have to check into that. I'd have to check into that.
Yeah, that's just the unintended consequence of now opening a water line meter that hasn't been working.
Yeah, but it should have been working.
I understand that.
We're getting billed anyway, right?
No.
No.
I mean, in terms of the fire departments being billed and so are the 48 users, right?
Right now?
Yeah. They must be.
We're not getting billed for any excess water that flows into, that flows into Hopkinton that's not used by the 48 users on the line.
Right.
So this new meter is gonna be a double check on the homeowners.
That's right.
They have their individual ones. This will check the water coming in the two-inch line, and they can compare and contrast that against the individual meters.
Great.
It will also measure the 12-inch line, which measures all, measures all the other water that's used, that's coming from Richmond to Hopkinton. The vast majority of that would be for flushing hydrants. The part that's not used for flushing hydrants, I'm not sure how much that is or how we would determine that. I'd have to check with the Town of Richmond.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, is just what's the next stage if there's an issue after they've opened that up? And then who pays for it?
Yes.
Bill, where's the site of this meter?
It's by Dowfield, it's in Dowfield.
Okay, it's not on Route 3, then? So we're not gonna, we're not gonna block off traffic on Route 3?
No, it's in Dowfield, as you, as you take a right, just where the National Grid places there.
Yeah, yeah.
Straight in there, so.
Okay, so it's not gonna interrupt traffic or cause a problem with that?
No.
You mentioned there was, it was 3 cents a gallon, actually it's 3 one hundredths of a cent, you know, it's .003 cents per gallon, yeah. Just wanna clarify that, so people aren't gonna say, my God, 3 cents a gallon.
Yeah, my mistake.
No, no, no. The other thing is, based on these figures, I don't know, it just seems like a lot of, a lot of water for flushing hydrants. You got 10 hydrants in Hopkinton, they're gonna use 150,000 gallons, that's 15,000 gallons per hydrant for flushing. That's a lot of wasted water.
They do it twice a year.
Okay, that's 750,000 gallons of water, you know, 7,500 gallons of water per flush, per hydrant. Wow. It's a shame that we, you know, I can see where the hydrants have to be flushed, and I think it's a very good idea, but boy, that's a lot of water just being poured down the drain.
Those numbers came from Chief Fred Stanley.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I mean, I can only.
No, I'm not beating you up, Bill, I'm just, I'm just saying, boy, that's a lot of water just being pumped down to the street.
It must have to be tested, then.
I mean, this is.
That's a result of that test, right?
It has, it takes like a half an hour, I think, before that, the water clears and then you have to rechlorinate it, it's.
Yeah, wow.
It's a lot of water.
Yeah, it sounds like it's going to become a complex problem after the fact, though, too. We'll have to follow it up, you know, after the fact, to make sure that everybody's getting the right amount of water, we know how much water's going in and out, and then it is indeed chlorinated or whatever it needs to do, because I know our, my neighborhood will close down water, but when you start it back up again, you have to boil it for a while. And you need to make sure that there's a, you know, the pressure is equalized, which takes a while, too.
This is really an initiative, an initiative from the Town of Richmond.
Mm-hmm.
We don't have really much to say about it based on the contractual agreements between Hopkinton and the Town of Richmond and the contractual, contractual agreement between Hopkinton and the Hope Valley Fire District. I mean, we're really locked in as to, you know, being required to pay for it and not having the right to disapprove it. I mean, it's still contractual-based.
Yep.
Thanks, Scott, you have anything for Bill?
No.
Okay. Mr. Buck?
Yeah, Bob, you're on the right track. Remember, we parked there next to the fire department when it was leaking. One of the lines froze and they were dumping thousands, tens of thousands of gallons into the river out back. That's probably why the water level never went down. So that meter probably would be a good idea to, for that. It would tell us when it was leaking and stuff like that. The other question I have, probably more importantly, is the payment. That should not come from the municipal budget, that should go to the water line users.
I don't know what the contractual.
All that, all the money, my understanding is, goes, for anything to pay for the water line, it strictly comes out of the water line budget. Now, there should be, I don't know if there's a surplus in there.
There is, yes.
That they can use that for, but it, it should be paid for. My understanding is that everything to do with the water line gets paid for through the water line users that are using that system. Somebody that's in Woodville that doesn't have anything to do with the water system, why should they be required to pay anything for upkeep when they have no benefits of it?
Tom, Tom's correct.
Well, contractually, who knows? I haven't really read the agreement in its entirety, but.
Contractually, the town is required to pay, but it doesn't say where the money comes from. Or perhaps maybe, I think there's like $70,000 in, in the water fund, you know, perhaps it could, perhaps it could come from there, yeah.
I would agree with Tom, I think it's.
Okay, that's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
I just thought that should come from the, from the water line thing. Like I said, I thought there was a surplus that had happened over the time, just before we lowered the rates a couple of years back, so, that's all.
Okay. Thank you, okay. All right, so, last public.
I just, so you'll just let us know how everything turns out and what's happening? You'll just update us on this at the end of the fix?
We're gonna be in it by the 17th.